It is wonderful, two dry, hot summer evenings, to our county commissioners' candidate forum. We're delighted that you're here. The forum is cosponsored by the Natrona County Public Library and the Casper League of Women Voters. I'm speaking to you on behalf of the League. Yes, they do admit men as men. Charlie Scott was a member forty years ago, and his mother was the first president of the Casper League back in 1953. We are a nonpartisan organization, and I do stress "nonpartisan," we strictly obey those guidelines. And our mission is to engage the public in the political process, encourage people to get involved, and most importantly, get out and vote. One of the things we do every two years, we put out this brochure, Government Natrona County, and it lists all sorts of commissions, elective officers, handy phone numbers. And they're yours free for the taking. This is jointly funded by both the county and the city, and we're delighted that they do that. Also, those of you who might be interested in joining the League, obviously, we're open to men and women. There's a brochure and signup sheet asking for your interest in the back corner to my right. And finally, you're free to take while they last, a wonderful reproduction of a mural that hangs in the Capitol. Again, thank you for coming, and I'd like to introduce Lisa Scruggan, who's going to talk on behalf of the library.
Thank you so much. So just really quickly, on behalf of the library, I'm thrilled to see you all here. There is nothing more important, in my humble opinion, than an informed citizenry as they're preparing to make a vote, that they have the opportunity to question their candidates and see if their values and their thoughts align with their own. So glad that you're here and exercising that privilege. And several people had asked in the past, when we first started posting this on our Facebook page, if we were going to livestream this. We don't have the capacity or the budget to livestream it, it's kind of an expensive undertaking. We're glad you're here, but if you have friends and family who are curious, we are going to record it. So we have our staff member, Abby, who's manning the iPad. It won't be high quality, it'll be what you can get with an iPad, but she's pretty amazing, she'll make it look great. But it will be on our YouTube channel, and so if you're interested as a follow-up afterward to go back and review what the candidates said, it will be on our YouTube page. I would ask that you please give a great applause to Betsy O'Neill, who's put this together year after year. And why this is so hot. And our two moderator, I'm about to introduce Beth Worgen. Thank you for volunteering. And so now, I'm going to turn it over to the moderators.
Thank you, Lisa. So let us go through the process we're going to go through tonight. Each of you candidates will have a minute and a half for your introductory statement. We'll start down at this end of the table, and we'll rotate down. And then we will be asking you questions, you'll each have a minute for each question. We'll start with Kevin on the end, and then the next question will move toward, and then we'll rotate down, and we're just going to follow that direction. So, and again, you'll have a minute on that. The last thing on the agenda is that you'll all get a minute for follow-up. So do any of you have any questions before we begin? I should say that these questions were compiled by the library and the League of Women Voters, and then some are also submitted from the audience, so that's where those questions came from. If we've got no questions, I guess we'll go ahead and get started. Oh, we got a question.
Will we all have the, will it be one question with all answers?
It will be the same question, I should clarify. Yep, we'll do the same question on the way through. Whoever's first on the hot seat, you know how that works, and at the muddy end, you'll have time to go through that question. So, I think, oh, I forgot. Betsy does have our timing system up here, so the yellow part will be halfway through. So as a reminder, you've got a minute and a half, so at forty-five seconds, she will do a yellow for the intro, and then red when you get to the end, and we ask that you conclude your comments then. On the questions and the follow-up, that will all be a minute, and so it'll be a thirty-second for the yellow, and then red will be at the end. So, okay? Great. All right, your first question up. Mr. Christoffersen, we have...
Don't want you to see me right?
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, you're right. I already messed up my own, I already messed up my own notes here. Please, you've got two minutes to tell us about yourself and your introduction.
First off, I'm a member of the League of Women Voters in the library, this is my third time getting to do this. First two times with the school board, it's always nice to have people interested in the elected officials out there. My name is Kevin Christoffersen. I was born here in Casper. I have three kids, they were all born here in Casper. I'm accompanied tonight by my lovely wife Ruth, and my daughter Ashley, who's due on my birthday, October twentieth, with my first real grandchild, but Ruth just had our other granddaughter. So anyway, and my campaign manager, Thomas, is here. It's just his first shot, and so I said just have fun with it, buddy. I own PC Transport, it's a trucking company here in Casper. It's a family business, fifty employees. And for the past eight years, I've served on the school board, served as a trustee right now, but I've served as the chair of that committee, I've served on the Wyoming High School Sports Association, the Wyoming School Board Association, currently on the rec board, and the bose's board. And I got there through Leadership Wyoming 2012, and they said, you know, you really need to win your success, well, you need to get back to your community. And had a lot of luck on the school board, learned a lot of things on the school board hat. And I just think that eight years is enough in one position, so I thought I would come here and give this a try with the county commissioners, because I love this county. I was born here, die here, own a lot of property in the county, and hope you vote for me.
My name's Worth Christie, and like Kevin, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the library for this forum. You know, we're going to be invited to several different forums this year, and this one's kind of the Cadillac of all of them, I think it's probably the most important one. We're fortunate enough to have the media here tonight, and unfortunately, more people don't show up for these forums. They're more interested perhaps looking at yard signs and name recognition than they are looking at what the value of each of the individual candidates are. My commitment is to the future and growth and stability of Natrona County. All candidates, including myself, have a list of what we feel are qualifications for elective office. Mine are listed on a sheet of paper, on a form or brochure in the back of the room there. Naturally, I put down all the good stuff, in fact, the fact that I'm a United States Army veteran. If you want to get beyond the real good stuff and get to some of the stuff that's questionable, I brought my wife along here tonight, too. All the candidates, including myself, have the list of qualifications, and every one of us are good citizens. We've been involved in our churches, numerous civic and charitable organizations. We all love God, our country, and the Wyoming Cowboys. Most campaigns rely on the biography that we've created, and some try to buy the election by cluttering up our community with a lot of yard signs. While I've placed about thirty-five small signs around the community, I've decided that it wasn't worth spending thousands and thousands of dollars of our retirement money to buy signs all over town. Look forward to this evening, and if you have any questions afterwards, please stay.
I'd like to thank everybody as well for the invite. My name's Jerry Cook, and I'd like to also thank all the candidates up here. I know what it takes, it's a lot of work, it's a ton of work, setting signs and talking to people. So with that, I'm a Casper native, born and raised here, don't know any other place, I guess, this is my home. I graduated from NC, married my wife in ninety-four, high school sweetheart. And we got two boys, we got our first grandkid, six months old now, didn't think I was old enough to have him. I joined the local 193 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union right out of high school, started our excavation business in 2000. I bought a farm in 2005, and we farm oats and hay and corn, you name it. I joined the Casper Alcova Irrigation Board in 2015. She's flashing the signs, so I'll try to hurry. Strong advocate for the Second Amendment. I would like to help out with the county in any way, shape, or form that I can, I'd like to help loosen some regulations that I think they've gotten a little over restrictive on. And I'd appreciate your vote as well.
Hello, can you hear me? Is it working?
Hello. Hi. Hi, I'm Vickery Fels Hall, and I'm running for Natrona County Commissioner, and thank you so much for having me, thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you so much to the library. And I am from Cody, and my family has a dude ranch that we've had since 1956, and that's that and the outfitting business is where I grew up. I am the mother of two kiddos, Grace and Tommy, they go to Paradise Valley School in the Mandarin Emergent Program, and my husband Bryant works at Hilltop Bank. And I, you know, again, thank you so much to the library for having us. Being at home the past couple of months when, you know, when everything was shut down, and not having access to the library while you're homeschooling your kids for the first time, just tells you how important the library and our community systems are that support all of us. And that's definitely one of the main reasons that I'm running, is these are serious times. And I work for the Wyoming Community Foundation, I've been there about nine years, and I've eighteen years of experience in the nonprofit world. And I work with community boards around the state, and we solve complicated problems. And here in the nonprofit business, so we do more with less, which I think our government institutions will have to do in the next couple of years. And so I'm happy to answer any of your questions tonight, and afterwards of course, too, so please reach out anytime, and looking forward to this evening.
Maybe? I said it was going to be shared, but it's not going to work, the mic won't turn on. Hello?
Hello. Okay. So we thank you to the library and to the League of Women Voters. We don't have very many opportunities to do this this election cycle, so I'm very grateful for the time. I'm going to talk as fast as an auctioneer, because I feel like I have a lot to squeeze into two minutes. My name is Brooke Kaufman, and I'm seeking election for the Natrona County Commission. When I saw the appointment back last year, there were two things I was interested in. I wanted to serve our community in a new way, and I also wanted to help solve challenges. So the cool part is, is I'm sitting here tonight, and I still feel the same way. I still want to serve the community in the way that I get to serve it as a commissioner, and I also want to continue to help solve problems. So a lot of people over the last seventeen months have said, Brooke, what's it like to be a commissioner, and is it what you thought it would be? And I can look you in the eye and say, you know what, it's not what I thought it would be. Because the truth is, sometimes we make decisions that upset people, and that's really difficult. We make decisions about road and bridge, public health. Obviously, if you guys are reading the news this week, we're going to have some decisions that come before us about Wyoming Medical Center. And these decisions are enormous, and they're enormous because they're going to change the landscape of our community for generations to come. So if I'm elected as one of your commissioners, I've got a couple things I'm going to focus on. The first is I want to continue to find solutions, I feel like that is what the commission does. Number two is I want the county government to be more approachable to the people. People fear reacting with government, I want them to feel as though they can engage. The next is fiscal stewardship, we've got to take good care of the resources that we have. I want to safeguard our private property rights. Also standing strong in the conservative principles that I was raised with, supporting development efforts that create primary jobs, and improving and maintaining our outdoor rec. So that's my time, but thank you very much, and I look forward to being here tonight, so thank you.
All right, my name is David North, and I've been continually involved with the community in several different aspects over the last several years. I first moved to Wyoming in eighty-six, right after college, and I wanted to put the game of fish apartment up there, worked for them for thirteen years. Then I decided I needed to make a living so I could support my family. And so I went to work at the Amaco Refiner, doing the reclamation work there. And I remained there until we had the golf course finished. At that time, I started my own environmental and safety compliance business, and I went to work for pretty much all of the major oil and gas companies within the state of Wyoming. I am also the president of Flat River Rod and Pen Club. I'm currently the fire chief for the county mills, and I'm also on the executive board and the for Natrona County. So I was involved last night in selecting three of the candidates that got pushed forward to the county commissioners to make their decision on who replaces Bunkie Louts. I do appreciate the League of Women Voters and library for allowing us this opportunity to come before you tonight. This is an opportunity that we don't have very often, especially this year, the opportunities that we have to give before the voters and actually sit down and talk to everybody. It's just not what it has been in the past. I'm running because I do want to be involved every day. I want to make sure that we can continually improve the county as we go. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to be going to the question portion of tonight's event, and we are trying to get through as many questions as possible, so you only have a minute, again, as Joanne said, to answer these questions. It's going to be a field very fast, but we really want to get to and cover as many questions as we can. So the first question goes to Mr. Christoffersen, and then it'll keep on going down. Tell us about your current and past involvement in Natrona County government. Have you been to any county committees, attended commission or planning commission meetings?
I've been before the commission quite a few times, for different reasons. I'm involved in the county, of course, I sit on the rec board, I sit there with Paul Ricolio, I've been on the rec board for seven years, chaired that board for a while. Where I came, when I first came on the rec board, we didn't have any money for three years, because the previous rec boards had done these monthly year grants. And when I was chair of that commission, I decided that was not the way to go, you shouldn't be spending future money, you know, for future boards. So now the rec board has plenty of money, so if you have a charity that needs money, go see us. I would like to go back on the rec board if I get elected with the Natrona County Commission. So other than that, I think I'm out of time. Thank you.
Mr. Christie?
Outside of being a Republican county president committee man, though I haven't held office in Natrona County before, I have been on numerous boards, I've been president of Legion Baseball, was heavily involved in the Boys Club back in the days before it was the Boys and Girls Club when we were deep in debt. Mr. Brown, I remember some of those days, I'm sure, was heavily involved in fundraising. And really, there were kind of several of us that saved Legion Baseball and the Boys Club for what they are today, back in those days. I remember the first night that I went to a Boys Club meeting, we were sixty-five thousand dollars in debt, and we survived. I've been to several commission meetings, I've been to Kid City Council meetings, and I've spent a lot of time in the last couple of months visiting with department heads, other county commissioners, and other people at town that are trying to figure out what problems we may have within the county, and how to go forward. Thank you.
I too. I've never, I've attended the meetings in the past, I haven't here recently, just for lack of time, I guess, for, the most part, we farm ground out west in Casper, so it kind of consumes us a little bit, but, I'm sorry?
Can you use the mic?
This better? There we go.
You got it.
Sorry about that. But no, I have not, I have not attended any of the most recent meetings, the last few months at least. I have read through the minutes in meetings past and tried to update myself that way.
So I have been, as part of doing my homework and getting ready, have been attending commissioner meetings and meeting with county commissioners, some of the county staff, and of course, lots of voters to hear about the state of things. But I also have some insight into the work of the county commission, because my father-in-law was a two-term county commissioner in Park County. And while most folks probably wouldn't consider landfill miners pleasant dinner table conversation, we would discuss not only that topic often, but also, you know, the importance of essential air service, how much it costs to pave county roads. Beyond that, I also work with a number of nonprofits around the county. I work with nonprofits all around the state, and so many of those work on all levels with the county, from the, like, youth services program to the, I'm running out of time. Okay, thank you. Oh, and then, did you, did you, I don't think it works, it doesn't work. Do you mind? Okay. Perfect. So when I first moved to Casper, I am the CEO of Visit Casper, and my, one of my first jobs was to go in front of the county, and it always used to terrify me a little bit, because it would be this board of county commissioners, and it was very formal. And there were projects that we wanted to report in the community, one being, you'll remember the Wyoming Eclipse Festival in 2017, so the county was a partner, and our agency took the lead on that. And then also over the years, also having to request money for CNFR, just to move some things forward. So that was my first interaction, is just through my CEO role in Visit Casper. But since that time, obviously was appointed to the commission, and have had the opportunity to learn a tremendous amount through that. So I have not been involved directly in any other county boards, but I obviously now have been a commissioner for seventeen months, so thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to, just one quick thing, Mr. North, sorry about this. We're actually going to ask that we hold applause until the very, very end, just because we really want to get through as many questions as possible, and that just gives us a little bit more time. Thank you.
All right, I'm currently on more boards than I want to count, and my wife says the same thing. I am currently on the central committee, the executive committee, the parks board, I'm the president of Flat River Rod and Pen Club. I am also involved in several other activities throughout the, throughout the county. I'm involved with the sheriff department, fire department, not only the county or the city of Mills, or the town of Mills, but also with the county fire, and the other fire departments within the county. So I'm involved in a lot of different things. I've got my finger on a lot of different areas, and I understand what the needs are for a lot of places, and what they're going to, what we're going to have to do in the future to continually move forward. So I've been active continually, the entire time I've been in Wyoming, and I've always been willing to give up my time to help other people and to make our county a better place to live. And that's what I continually plan on doing in the future. Thank you.
All right, second round, this first question, and this is under zoning and development. The first candidate is Mr. Christie. Are there any areas where you believe the county shouldn't be allowed, or shouldn't allow, development?
I'm sure there are, obviously. Am I on the air here? I'm sure there are some areas that, I think it's dead again, is it? That works already, I have the green light.
I'm sure there are some areas in the county that we shouldn't have developed, and they
would, forty-nine percent of the county is BLN land, most of that is multiple use, but I'm sure there's some areas within the county that we probably shouldn't touch. There's areas that we're going to have to look at for development, whether it gets too close to housing, or whether it interferes with people's lives, or whatever, on rules, but for the most part, no. I think that right now, we need to look at economic development as a wide-open situation here in the county. Perhaps the most important thing we do outside of managing the day-to-day business of county government is going to be economic development.
You don't have to turn it off. This thing is sensitive.
You got the holler.
I guess so. I believe the market dictates, you know, development to some degree, and I tend to agree with them. I think that, you know, that there probably are some areas, I can't think of any off the top of my head. But I think that if someone were to develop or subdivide their parcels, the market's going to, you know, dictate whether or not that parcel sells. If it doesn't sell, then you're sitting on a subdivided parcel that's of no use to anybody, so I hope that answered your question.
Sorry, ready to check. I, you know, our, we have so many public lands, you know, Natrona County is, you know, presently fifty percent public lands, and the way we can access the public lands, both for their economic potential, for their recreation opportunities, all of this affects our quality of life. And when it comes to just development generally, you know, we need to have smart development, and planning certainly helps to make sure in the future we don't have conflicts between, you know, residential and heavy commercial areas. So I think planning helps with a lot of that, but I definitely am for developing our lands for economic and recreation purposes. So the county works really extensively. We do have a land use plan that's been approved, and there's a lot of input from the community on that land use plan. So if somebody from a development perspective comes to the county and says, I'm interested, I'm interested, gosh dang it, I'm interested in some kind of a development, I think two things. One, it's got to be zoning, current zoning, if not, it has to go through the process to be changed. Number two, there are a lot of that land use plan, because that's something that's already been vetted by the public. So right now, I can't say there's specific areas that I personally think or don't think, but I think the county does a lot of work to make sure that there's good regulations in place around that.
Yes, there are places that I believe that we should not be developing, mainly the need open spaces. That's one of the things that's been a major contributing factor to a lot of areas that have been developed, is to have open spaces so that in the future, we can utilize that. But it is going to be determined along economic values, and what we do and where we go, and how we do that. Zoning needs to be set, so that we have most use. You don't want industrial areas next to commercial or residential areas, or things like that. So zoning is important, but at the same time, it could be so prohibitive, if we allow it to be, that people can't even do things with their own property. And that's where we need to step back, and we need to make sure that those private property rights are adhered to and taken care of during the zone. And that's one of the biggest things that I'm running on, is because we do need to make sure that private property owners have those rights. Thank you.
So I read, I went ahead long, you read the land use plan. It does have some problems. It was developed ten years, fifteen years ago, looking after 2030. I think they called it the 2030 Plan. And there's some changes that need to happen in there, and it needs to follow. It's being used like it's, like it's zoning now. I went to them, they says, "No, you can't do that because it's not in the plan." It's like, well, it's zoning differently. But anyway, if there is places in the county that need to be protected, I think we need to own it. I am a very strong proponent of private property rights. I bought my land. I paid for it. I pay for the taxes on it every year. If I want to put a subdivision in there, and it's not conflicting with the neighbors, and I shouldn't be turned down just because somebody sent in one of these seats, decides they have it for use for my land. If they want my land, they should pay for it.
I need to grab the mic back.
All right. So the next question is, and that will go to Mr. Cook. Disputed property tax assessments have been much in the news lately. The county commission is effectively the port of last resort to which contested assessments can be referred for resolution. Do you think this is the proper role of the commissioners? If not, what would be your suggestion for a solution?
I don't believe that they are the last stand. I think there's other avenues that can be taken. I know there's a lot of people that are ready to go after the assessor with pitchforks and torches, but I mean, I, you know. Personally, I, I, I.
Ten acres, I agree with a lot of it, but on the same hand, I think that, you know, there are other avenues, district court, things of that nature, that people can go after that.
Is that me or you? Hello? Oh, gosh. A little too, yeah. This is the thing that I'm getting the most calls about, that most people are talking to me about, is it's just the biggest area of concern right now. And it is really concerning, especially with the economic hardships our families are facing and our community is facing, that folks are faced with everywhere from a two-hundred to, I talked to someone who had about an eighteen-hundred percent increase in their property taxes. So this is certainly something that we need to find some solutions for. There are, I, you know, heard some blames run around and things that have happened in the past, but we need to have a solution going forward. And if we can maybe group some people together and communities, you know, some of the neighborhoods together and see if we can, if there's a couple wrong in that community, maybe then we can, you know, change all of the, those assessments in that neighborhood. I, yeah. Oh, this one's working.
Beth, can you ask a question again? It was something about DOE. Thank you. I just want to make sure I get to all of it.
Yep. Disputed property tax assessments have been much in the news lately. The county commission is effectively the court of last resort to which contested assessments can be referred for a solution. Do you think this is the proper role for commissioners? If not, what would be your suggestion for a solution?
Thank you. So right now, last thing, we're just under three thousand contested cases from a property tax perspective. Statutorily, the Board of County Commissioners does sit as the Board of Equalization, so by law, that is one of our requirements, and that's one of our jobs. So I can tell you that we understand that we're in a really tough spot with this because there's, from a, even just from a bandwidth of a human perspective to go through three thousand assessments, with the amount of staff that it's going to take at the county and the time of the commissioners, it's going to take a lot. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that it's not the best use of our time because statutorily we are required to do it, but we do understand there's a challenge and some things that do need to be addressed. So, thank you.
Jerk hit right on the nail right on the head. This is not the last resort, last place that people can actually take it. You can't go to district court. There are other avenues, so the county commissioners are not the last step in the table. You can do other things after that. But it is a necessary thing for the county commissioners to do. Unfortunately, this year, because of so many rises in the assessments, three thousand is more than they've ever had on record, and that's something that does need to be taken care of. And yes, it's part of the county commissioners' job, but we have that many, there are other options that we can look at to get that corrected. And we don't have enough time to answer that moment, but there are other ways that they can do that. But it is something that is statutorily required of the county commissioners to do. And normally, in most years, they can get it done without any trouble. Thank you.
So, yeah, we do have a problem over there. I have two, two in myself, and there's no common sense. You can't, you can't talk to somebody that actually knows what you're talking about. I own fifteen properties. I know what they're worth. They divide one of mine up into three different lots and appraise each lot, even though the building sits on it. And they did that because they have some type of formula that can show that less land is worth more. So my lot, the lot in the threes, is worth a lot more than I paid for it two years ago. They don't even look at what you paid for it. So there's problems over there. Probably the next election might not solve that problem. But until it happens, we're going to have to come up with some type of a system to look at some of these without bringing it right in front of the Board of Equalization. Maybe we'll do another subcommittee and see if we can get some of these fixed before it actually goes forward. There has to be another step in there because there's no way the Board of Equalization can go through three thousand of these things. So there's ways to figure it out. We will, we won't completely solve it until Matt Keen is gone. Sorry. I'll put that in the paper.
Obviously, it's a serious problem in state law, since the Natrona County Commissioner and the county commissioners are the court that will review each of these appeals. Currently, we're sitting at almost three thousand appeals. If you do the math on it, from what I'm told by existing commissioners, each of these appeals will average about an hour to an hour and ten minutes, each one, and we have a responsibility as commissioners to listen to every one of them, because everybody's entitled to their day in court. This creates a problem because if we do seven to eight of these a day, we're going to be listening to appeals clear into the year 2022. Now, I want you to consider this when you're determining who your voter. I'm the only one up here that's fully retired. I've got time to do it, and I'll do it because people have the right to the hearings. But on the other hand, you have to have at least three commissioners there for each of these hearings, and it's difficult when others have full-time jobs. I know that twenty years ago, I couldn't have done it, so.
All right. So here's the thing. We've been told that it's the lapel microphones that are throwing everything off. So Mr. North and Mr. Christofferson and Mr. Cook, if you could turn off, we're just going to try it, and if it works. Right. That will help, maybe. And we'll just share the microphones. Does that?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next question is for Ms. Fale Hall. Let's see. What does the, what does the recent proposal for the acquisition for Banner Health mean for the county? What is your opinion on this?
Well, it sounds like a pretty incredible opportunity, and certainly a windfall in a time when we could use it. One of my main concerns is the studies that show that hospital acquisitions and mergers often will lead to increased prices for patients. So that, I know that that's sort of the path internationally is always increased prices for patients, but that is not sustainable, and especially in Wyoming when we have so few choices. I'm a cancer survivor myself, and so this is, I interface with the healthcare system a lot. This is an issue I am watching very closely.
I didn't fully hear the question. Could you repeat the answer?
I sure will. I sure will. To repeat the question before Ms. Kaufman starts. What does the recent proposal for acquisition for Banner Health mean for the county? What is your opinion on this?
Thank you.
You bet.
So I'm, I'm very excited about the opportunity that the relationship between Wyoming Medical Center and Banner Health could bring to the county. Obviously, we've been very clear, and I think even the way the question is phrased, no decisions have been made. There's going to be a very public process, but I think from someone who is a citizen here, some of the things that I'm more passionate about that this might bring to us are extended services or extended care capacity, also maybe some physician recruitment when things are a little bit challenging. From a financial perspective, if you've read the survey, then you see what the value is, the market value is of the assets. So from the county's perspective, you can, you can peel off a significant piece of that and fund healthcare in the county long-term. It also does allow the county to invest in its future in other ways with a significant amount of money. And then there's some debt that's associated with Wyoming Medical Center that would be able to be retired. So from an economic perspective, those are the facts, but I think as a person who consumes healthcare here, I'm most excited about the access and the potential expansion of services. Thank you.
As a park chief at Mills, we run an ambulance service also, and so I've got paramedics, and we deal with Wyoming Medical Center on a daily basis. And there's a lot of challenges out there, and I hear about those from both sides. With Banner coming in, there's a lot of people that don't know what's going to happen. I don't think any of us know a hundred percent. But the fact that it's going to be turned over to a private hospital and not county-owned in the future.
The board of that hospital, so it means a lot to me. In fact, I've had my wife saved there twice, one with ruptured spleen and one with broken backs and ribs, so let's not screw it up.
Well, with the exception of Brooke, most of us, all we know is what we've read in the paper, what we've heard on the news. Most of the dealings, of course, were very close to the vest, as they should have been. I'm interested in the public hearings. My main interest would be as a commissioner and even as a citizen, is it's possible that we can lower healthcare costs here in the county, subsequently lowering insurance costs. Ours are naturally among the highest in the nation at this particular time, which is, it really stimulates, stimulates economic growth. And naturally, we would hope that we could enhance or improve the quality of healthcare that we get here. Since I've lived in Natrona County in the last forty years, the healthcare system has been the fastest-growing segment of our economy, has become a very important part of our economy. And I think probably from what I've seen, it looks like this is a good move, but I still have some questions. Thank you. Thank you.
I tend to agree with everybody here. I think it's, it sounds like good news, but I just think it's simply too early to tell. I think, I'd love to give a time to see where it ends. I too was born and raised here in this hospital, and I guess we'll leave it at that.
Okay. I think we're now to asking Ms. Kaufman. The question is, are there positions or services within county government that you see as unnecessary or perhaps better handled by the private sector?
So when I was originally appointed to the commission, I'm this person who thinks I can look at numbers and look at the budget and say, "I'm going to find where the fat is," or "There's a lot going on over here." And surely, I mean, every time you go in front of the commission, "Money's tight, money's tight." And I thought, "Oh, that's, that can't be true." Right? That can't be true. So now that I am on the other side of it, and it's been amazing to go through budget now twice and see how lean we run on the expenses. So it, I, there's not a department, when I look at their P and L every month, there's not a department that's bloated from the expense perspective. The interesting part about the county is a lot of the services we provide are required statutorily, so there's not things that we can look at and say, "Well, that feels like something we're just not going to do anymore. You're not going to be able to get your tags there anymore," or "Get your marriage license." I mean, those are all things that are critical and they're regulated, right? So I don't, it's been interesting because a lot, at the last harvest, somebody said, "Well, how would you cut the county budget?" And I would say, when cuts are needed, it's going to have to be meticulous because that organization does run very lean. So, thank you.
I've seen a lot of the county budget, and I've worked with a lot of the different agencies within the county, and Brooke's right, it's a lot leaner than people realize. There's always places that we can improve. I don't care where you go or what you do, there's always things that we can do. Having my own business for the last eighteen years, and having employees and everything else, I was constantly looking for places that you could actually cut and still provide the services. That's not saying that you don't change or you cut people, but there's always things that you can improve on, no matter what you do. And that's one of the things that you have to constantly look at to make sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck with the money that we are spending. But there are agencies that we don't have any choice on. We have to fund them, and they're the ones that are priority, and they, they're going to take the bulk of the budget. And those are the areas that if we do get into really lean times, they're the ones that are going to continue to get most of that. So, thank you.
So through experience, I know that there's no way I could answer the question sitting here. It takes a lot of time and digging and talking to people who get in there and figure out where you can cut, but there's always fat in government. There is, I sometimes wonder about the, how many dollars a year for the security of the courthouse? You know, this is Wyoming. I don't know if we need that kind of security over there.
The budget, I think I understand the budget, but what you don't see when you're just a layperson looking at a budget, even though I've worked with them before, you really don't know if there's any fat or if there are duplications of services. And I've been visiting with a lot of department heads, and of course, they're happy to see me because I haven't been beaten in the election yet, I guess. And they're not about to tell me where they have problems at this particular point in time. So to answer the question properly, I'm going to have to get to know these people. I'm going to have to go out and learn the department, see what's going on, and see if I can work with them and find out if there's anything that we can do to eliminate duplication or fatten the budgets and try to trim it down. And that's an important part of the job. When I first looked at running for county commission, I called Johnny Campbell, who I go way back with, Boys Club Board, and I said, "John, to do the job right, how much time does it take?" And he said, "To do the job right, you'd better spend thirty-five to forty hours a week." And that was, of course, long before we got blasted with three thousand appeals on taxes. So it's going to take some time. Thank you.
This is considered, as I understand it, a part-time job, and we all know that's not the case. I mean, this is a full-time job, or at least I plan to dedicate it and use it as a full-time job, but there's always budget cuts that can be made, and there's misuse of money sometimes, you know? So I think you have to reevaluate, go through the budget. You know, the budget I seen was pretty vague. There's not much for additional line items. We're not, you know, in our board at Casper Alcoiration, we have a couple million dollar budget, and so we try to be pretty meticulous on it. It's never good enough, it seems like, for certain members, but you do the best you can with it. And I think that's what you have to do here with the county commission.
So it is core to my Wyoming values and Republican values, that government should be as efficient and effective to serve the people as possible. But as Brooke said earlier, so much of the work that's done by the county is required by statute. So even though I do think the private sector often can do a better job than government agencies, in most cases, you know, there aren't those opportunities. I do know that the, that there could potentially be some opportunities with sharing of services and resources between the city and the county. I know they work well together already, and so perhaps there's some more opportunities there, but yeah, I think, I think things are pretty lean, and I think you can tell that because they were just able to pass a balanced budget, so, in really difficult times.
So this next question was submitted from the audience, and this is for Mr. North. There is more to Natrona County than just Casper. How will you represent the concerns of the rural citizens?
That's real easy for me because I actually live in the county. I don't live in the city, and I actually have property wherever it's hagged on. I'm continually involved with the activities that go on up on Casper Mountain and around the, around the county. I've been to every portion of this county, and I understand that we have a lot of needs, and there's a lot of things that have to be taken care of. A lot of my friends that I deal with on a day-to-day basis actually live out in the county, not just inside the city. So we need to work on the roads, we need to work on improvements, we need to work on the infrastructure that we have, not only around here, but up on Casper Mountain, we need to work on the parks, we need to improve them and repair things that have been neglected for years. And we need to continually work on the things out of the lakes and the other areas around the county. We need to continue to make sure that this county is a place that people can come to and want to come to and utilize our facilities.
So I like the, I live out in the county, and that's pretty important because I deal with the county zoning and the county planning and all that kind of stuff when I do it. I also, Rob Henry is a neighbor of himself into the big horns, and we, we have a lock-in fishing program for the public. I believe in public access where it's, where it's possible. I firmly believe in public access to public lands. I, I can't remember what the question was.
There is more to Natrona County than just Casper. How will you represent the concerns of those of rural? There is more to Nautrona County than just Casper. How will you represent the concerns of those rural areas?
Oh yeah, I, I'm in the rural areas all the time. I know a lot of ranchers and talk to the ranchers and whatnot. And it's true, I mean, if you talk to Rob, he says Casper's where you get elected, because, you know, everybody in your town is both. But Nautrona County is huge. I think between Rob Henry and I, we're neighbors. We ought to be able to get that road paved with copper mountain going, right? Hey guys, that was a joke. Especially this sergeant, don't put that in favor, guys. No, I, I loved recreation when I was four.
Thank you.
There's six towns and cities or municipalities in Nautrona County. And I've taken interest in, in all of them. I've held town hall meetings in Barnum Midwest and Edgerton. And it's been widely circulated in the media that the attendance wasn't what we wanted. But we did draw some key people from the areas with concerns that they have with the county. And their valid concerns, and we're gonna have to work with department heads to service the other five communities. There's more to Nautrona County than just Casper. And I pledged to three towns in our bid too, and I still have to go to Mills and Edgerton. But I will attend their council meetings periodically. I will meet with the civic leaders, and I certainly will be responsive to the needs that they have, because they're a vital part of the county. And you look to Midwest and Edgerton, and of course, a huge part of our tax base still does come out of the northern end of the county. Thank you.
I too farmed around west of Casper. I actually, funny enough, I bought Dave North's property and I bought Jim Miller's property, so we know something about the rural community. You know, I know everybody out on the west, west side of town, it seems like, and my weakness is probably the town of Casper. But the folks out there in Midwest and Powder River, if you just talk to them, I mean, they feel like they have just been horribly neglected by our county officials. And I, you know, if elected, I would aim to do something about that. I think there's a lot of roads and things of that nature that can be fixed, or at least maintained, so.
So whenever anyone introduces me as being from Cody, I often correct them and say, "Actually, I'm from Wapiti." So I was actually raised 25 miles outside of town, and I grew up on Septic and, well, not on the, you know, no, I live in downtown Casper now. I'm really a county kid at heart, and if I were elected, I would do everything I could to represent the folks all around the county, not just Casper. Okay, okay. Is there more, there's more than just Casper? How will you represent the concerns of all citizens? As a commissioner, that's just the nade into the job. So when your phone rings, when you answer the phone or you're responding to someone, it's not necessarily that you know that they live in Mills, or they live in the county, or they live in Casper. Our job as commissioners is to represent all citizens of the county equally, so I am very committed to that. I think there's a couple things. One, we also support all residents if we fund basic services, so things that are required and giving people access to those basic services. I also think across the board, when we can invest in things that drive our quality of life, that impact every citizen equally. And then, one of the things that's really interesting, we get far more calls from the county than obviously from people who live in the community. But enforcement is a really big issue, so I feel like as we block things down, continuing to figure out ways to enforce in a meaningful way, some of the things that are against planning and zoning or code enforcement, those are gonna be critical. But a citizen of the county is represented by the commission, and that's just the role of it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think we're down to the next question, and this is another question that was submitted by the audience. Mr. Kristofferson, what are your top three priorities as commissioner?
To develop a savings plan for the county, so when I leave this job as commissioner, there's a cushion. I think that's very important. Second would be recreation. For believer in public access to public lands, if there's any land law public plans, I'd like to be able to find ways into them. And I would like to be fair with the taxation and the equalization board, because I understand what it's like to get a notice of the mail that says that you owe a lot more money than what you really should, and they have to not listen to you. So I would be very fair on that board. I'll listen to people's concerns, and I would do what was fair. So, that was the beginning.
Obviously, number one is the overall management of county government and the judicial use of the funds and the responsibility you have to the taxpayers and citizens of the county. I think one of the things that I place the highest priority, I don't know, is really diversifying our economy, creating jobs, reducing instability of the boom bust cycle that we've known in Wyoming, really since ever the foundation of OPEC. It's easy to give diversification lip service during an energy bust, then do nothing when the good times return. I promise you that I'll follow through no matter what the status of the energy is, and I'm gonna work hard to see what we can do to take advantage of the international customs facility that we have out at the airport, which has been drastically underused. We need to look at ways that all these trucks that are coming in with Walmart and Albertsons and Smiths are not leaving here empty, but taking value-added products back to their warehouses, whether they be in Cheyenne, Denver, or Salt Lake.
I'd like to work on maintaining the budget. I think, you know, helping to trim with that. I'd like to help with the fairgrounds. It seems like the fairgrounds is becoming more and more dilapidated every year. We don't do half the events that we did when we were kids, I guess, and used to attend concerts and everything else down there. And so it just seems like it's a vacant parking lot. I'd like to see the regulations be loosened in the planning. You know, as far as planning and zoning, I think that we've just become way too restrictive on certain items in our county.
So fiscal responsibility and the end of the county budget absolutely would be the first priority for me, and I think the number one job of the county commissioners. Really, the COVID-19 pandemic and getting our community to the other side of this is one of the huge reasons I ran for county commissioner, that I'm running for county commissioner, and making sure that our county and our communities are stronger on the other side of this. That this, with so many more people able to work remotely, I think there's real opportunities actually for Casper. You know, what do we not have that someone would want to move their business here? I mean, we have great air service, we have incredible recreation opportunities, we have wonderful infrastructure, and this is just the best place to live. So making sure we preserve all of those things, so that on the other side of this, we can really maximize that. And so, you know, all those things that make this such a good place, I definitely wanna point, you know, the outdoor recreation and our parks department, of course, is a huge part of that.
I have so many that I wanna know if I can just list eight quickly, but I know it's top three. So one of the things I've learned as a commissioner is, we honestly, we spend a lot of time just solving challenges. Like, that's the job, like, figure out a way to move it forward or solve the problem. So a couple things that I am hugely focused on, fiscal stewardship. We're the keeper of resources in so many ways, certainly financial, but we've also got incredible assets that we're responsible for. So those are huge priorities to me. That's a great segue into improving and maintaining our park system. I'm very passionate about, we've got to deploy some resources to improve that in the county. And then the last for me would be updating our planning and zoning regulations. So nine times out of 10 when I'm in the public and somebody's got a challenge or a problem, it comes back to that department. So Jason hears from me probably more than he ever wants to. We know, we've gotta update that, and it's a huge investment, an enormous financial investment. But that, that plan is 20 years old, or those regulations are 20 years old, so it's time. So those are some things that are immediately on my radar.
That's a big question for a minute, but the first thing we need to do, and I plan on doing, is to work with our community, support our community, get it moving again. With COVID, with the loss of oil revenue, with the loss of coal work revenue in the state, we've gotta get our community going again. And we've gotta bring in new, new businesses, diversifying, and get things going that don't rely on those industries. And that's gonna be the biggest thing to start with. We've lost a lot of businesses already that closed their doors because of the COVID restrictions. And that's something that we need to work on. Second thing is to, Brooke touched on it, and I know Jason's talked about it. We do need to work on our zoning. We need to increase our, or expedite our ability to get permits taken care of quicker. You know, whatever that program is, we need to work on something so it's expedited and we can get people in and out, because building is a big thing right now. But when you have a delay in the permitting process, it just takes that much longer.
Our next question. The county and the city of Casper jointly fund some of the community's human services needs for youth and mental health, developmental health, family violence and substance abuse prevention, and for senior services. If the current economic downturn continues, how will you financially meet social services needs in the community and the county?
That's an area that is very difficult to look at any cuts on now. I'm certainly not qualified to determine what the quality of services is and what the treatment should be. But I do know that treatment is a heck of a lot less expensive than incarceration. A few years ago, I was walking in one of the restaurants in town, and a couple certain court judges that I've known for a long time were walking in, and then I pointed out that their job load seems to be a lot greater today. And they said, "Yes, it is." In fact, 85% of what they do now is meth-related. And we need to maintain the services, the drug courts, the social services that we have in those areas. We've gotta do something about it. It's destroying our youth, it's destroying our families, just totally destroying the quality of life, not only here in Nautrona County, but nationwide. And I certainly would hope that we could avoid any cuts in that particular area.
I agree. We can't, I don't think that we can afford it as a society. We can all turn on our TVs, we all have one, and you can see the problems in some of the larger cities. But that exactly is, you know, that's what's causing that. They're not funding these, or they're just not doing anything about it. And I think we have to, we have to do better, and we have done better. I think Nautrona County is, is, you know, kind of a benchmark for that, so we just need to continue it.
Well, as the, as the economy suffers, you know, social service needs go up. And I, I think we've all experienced that. I think we're having a huge, not only did Wyoming struggle and our community struggle with mental health issues before this, but COVID and being locked down and being lonely has only exacerbated all of these things. And of course, philanthropy can step in to some extent, and that is my job. That is what I do every day, and I'm working to, to do what we can to do more with less, to bridge the gaps. But philanthropy cannot fill in the gaps left by government. And so we're either gonna lose a bunch of services, or we're gonna have to be incredibly creative and with some public-private partnerships and community collaboration, because we have a lot of folks that need support.
So one of the things that came up in a conversation today was, many of you probably read that the State Department of Health is cutting their budget. I think the last number I saw was $90 million. So at the county, we actually took a call about potentially co-funding a position out of the district attorney's office. And that's probably more detail, and I probably don't know enough. But what my concern is, is that as the state continues to cut, some of those costs are gonna continue to be pushed down on local governments. And that's gonna be really difficult, considering that we're running really tight as well. One of the things I will compliment on, and I think this is a solution. You can, you can stretch things a little, but you can only stretch so far until the point where services go away. But one of the neat things is the agencies that the county's involved in or helps fund, they are really good at pursuing federal dollars to some degree. So I think, how do we create a program or some opportunity to start leveraging what their income streams are so that we can help minimize the elimination of some of those agencies? I mean, we can, we can stretch farther, but to Vickery's point, you can only go so far before services go away. So it's definitely gonna be on our minds, especially as the state continues to make some pretty drastic cuts.
I think the first problem we're gonna have is that, is with the drug problem that we do have in Casper and the social problems that are associated with that. We can all, we can all close our eyes and pretend it doesn't exist, but it does. I see that all the time on a firsthand basis, you know? And that is something that is gonna continually be an issue until we get that taken care of. And there's no, no quick, easy answer for any of that stuff. The Boys and Girls Club are doing a great job here in Casper. They have really reached out to a lot of kids and given them an opportunity to do things. But this is an area where not just the government, but this is where the private sector can step in. We have churches, we have other avenues that we can take, pick up with some social programs around, around the town, around the county. They can help, and they're willing to help, but we need to utilize that resource. As funding decreases, both federally and statewide, we need to look at those other options.
I think this is where a partnership between county and the school district really is important, because the school district is really in charge of those kids most of the time. First thing we need to do is get the kids back in school safely. That is very paramount, that we get those kids back in school. I've been hearing from all sorts of parents, especially with the needs children, that, you know, the good kids, they get mom, they do a great job, but the kids that really need something, they can't be on their own. I mean, some of these kids are gonna have homes to live in, so we gotta get the schools back open. Schools have counselors, schools have, the school district has money to help these kids, so that's number one. The drug court, what I wanted to say, I've sent through Judge Brown's presentation, and he really helps those kids, and he really loves those kids, and really cares about them. I wouldn't have him a penny, other than that, I think that would be it.
This message, or this question is for Mr. Cook, starting with you. How would you balance the need for civility with a citizen's right to speak out at meetings?
The citizen's right to, I'm s-
I'll say it again. How would you balance the need for civility with a citizen's right to speak out at meetings?
Well, I think we do. I think that, you know, citizens- I, I believe we do a pretty decent job with that. I don't particularly know of any here locally that have been an issue with that. And so I, I guess I would, I'm a little confused by the question, to be honest with you. I'll leave it at that.
One of the wonderful things about a forum like tonight is it's an opportunity for civil discourse, and that's such an important thing. And of course, as county officials, if elected, it's our job to listen to the citizens and to give them a forum to speak up and to listen deeply. And that would absolutely be a primary, primary goal of mine as your county commissioner.
One of the things I've appreciated about being commissioner is the decorum of our public meetings, so there's a process that you follow, there's a structure to the meeting. People are allowed to come up and make their comments, and certainly, the commission listens. There has been, I don't think there's been one time since I've been on the commission that we've actually removed someone from a meeting. I know that there are times that there is an animated or heated moment in that, and I know that there are times that it gets close to maybe having to ask somebody to remove themselves from the facility. And that would be just for blatant disrespect, or not following the process, or, or, you know, being menacing, whatever those words might be. But it's, it's a very hard day, but I think the way that county government's set up, it provides for and supports this idea of civil, civil conversation as you wanna engage with your government, so.
I've been at a lot of public meetings, and I've seen some where people do get a little out of hand. But when you have passion involved, and that's why they're there, that's why the citizens are there, is to express what their needs are, their wants, or their desires. If you stifle that, then you just create problems. You need to allow people to speak freely, as long as they follow the protocol and they do what they need to do. And if you have to send, there's certain people that you have to set a timeline on, because if you don't, they'll speak for 30 minutes, you know, instead of three minutes. And there's other people that get up there and they'll say their piece, and they'll turn around and walk off and leave the meeting. That's okay. We just need to make sure that we control how people do that. We just need to make sure that we control how people do that. And so far, the meetings that I've been at, that has been a good process. We've already got it in place, it's already working, and different people have different perspec- perspectives on it, but that's, I think it's working fine right now.
So I, I do believe that the, uh, public has a right to speak in public meetings, and you should listen, everybody that has something to say. In school board meetings, I've sat there for two and a half hours, listened to people. And I like to take notes, you know, let people say the same thing, but there's one good idea that's come from the public, you can see where the passion is. And, uh, I, I was a chair of the, uh, school board for two years, and I found out it's, it's kinda like refereeing a kid's basketball game. If, if you let them get away with the fouls per se, then you have just a melee going on, so you gotta stick to the rules.
On the bottom of my campaign literature, stuff that I've written out here, I put the words, "I listen, I return phone calls, and I'm accessible and go pokes." All I ask for is civility. If I'm on a commission, if I'm fortunate enough to be on a commission or, or in any situation, I'm going to treat you with respect, and I'm gonna act as a gentleman, and, and I would hope that I would get that in return. I expect there to be disagreement. If there's anybody in this room and agrees with me on 100% of, of everything, one of us is not necessary. And the only way I'm gonna learn is to listen, and to listen to you. And that's what I did in Barnum, that's what I did in Midwest, that's what I did in Edgerton, and I learned some things. And I'll give you the same courtesy, and I wanna learn, I want to know where you're coming from. And, and even if we have to meet in the middle, that's a lot better, but let's keep it civil. I mean, uh, sensibility is, is lacking in today's society, and we need to, to bring it back. Thank you.
Okay, so, last question is from Ms. Hales Hall, and, um, this was submitted from the audience. It's gonna be a lightning round, you have 10 seconds and one sentence. Um, please choose the movie that describes you best.
Oh.
You're having fun.
Right now?
No.
Oh, gosh.
Stop it.
This is, okay, I don't know that it describes you best, I do love Princess Bride, but I would, I would not actually be the princess.
So I'm sitting here and my favorite movie in the world is Heat, but that's like a bunch of criminals and bank robbers, and I'm like, I don't wanna go down as that, but that's my favorite movie.
I'm about half nervous to say this, one of my favorite movies is Blazing Saddles, because it's so lit and it's great.
You have a fan in the crowd.
Uh, it's not a movie, it's a cartoon character. Uh, I'm an air vendor from Ambar, because you have kids, but I am an air vendor.
I don't go to many movies anymore, but I think probably, uh, the one that comes the closest would be It's a Wonderful Life.
We're not a big movie boss in our house either, so I would have to say my favorites probably A Few Good Men, Like to Argue.
We thought that it'd be fun just to ask something a little bit lighter. You're gonna trouble them.
Yeah, Princess and a bank robber and a blazing saddle, like, I don't know how that's gonna look if you had.
Okay, we are, um, coming up on the, the end of this evening, and, uh, just wanted to really quickly thank the audience so much for submitting so many questions. We just were not able to get to so many of these good questions, and so would really hope that the candidates would make themselves available, um, after the actual organized forum, um, to answer questions from, from the audience, um, as well as in the future, um, during your candidacy. Um, but now we've entered the, the portion of the wrap-up, and so we'll give you each, um, a minute to, to give us whatever wrap-up you choose to give us, it is your choice.
Start, oh, excuse me, start with this call.
One minute.
One minute?
Am I on? So I'm gonna stand, I feel like I've been sitting forever. So it has been my honor to be a commissioner for the last 17 months. I, I love Netroona County, and obviously if you are here to put the time and energy to being at a candidate forum, you care about this place too, so I would-
The main reason I want, I'm running is because I wanna help out. I've got probably the most diverse background of everybody up here, um, and I can bring something to the table that the current commissioners don't have. Yeah, there's a lot of things that I've been involved with, and a lot of things that I can help out with, and working with all the different agencies within the county, that helps out, because I know what their needs are. But I'm not a politician, I never have been, and I believe in term limits, and I will not serve more than two terms. That's one thing that I, I commit to you right now, is I believe in term limits, because Thomas Jefferson believed that as citizens, we were supposed to go and work in the government and then leave and go back into our private lives. And I believe in, that we need to do that, and I think that's part of the problem that we've got right now, is that so many politicians, like Nancy Pelosi, like Chuck Schumer, they've been in there for 75 years, between the two of them, so, thank you. I need a mic.
Sorry, they all ended up down here. I have them all.
Thank you very much for hearing us, thank you for having us. I, uh, I've put in eight years on the school board, and I've really enjoyed it, it's been really challenging, there's some times I thought, why am I having to learn this? But, um, I hope in those, those eight years, I've done a lot of good for the kids, building me and T J. Uh, has pool right now, that was my, uh, my, uh, push to get that done, and the bridge to connect the two, the county kids safe. Uh, there's a lot of things that I was able to accomplish on the, uh, school board, and I didn't see them going in, but I will give it my all. I'm not a politician, sometimes I say things that are really stupid, uh, but my daughter says I have no filter whatsoever, but I'm honest, and you will always know where I'm standing and where I'm coming from, and, um, everybody here, and I'll try to answer everybody that calls me up, unless they're saying really bad things.
I'm sincere when I say that I wanna, is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sincere when I say that I wanna work with you and the public and figure out ways that we can work to stabilize and develop, uh, the economy of Netroona County and the state of Wyoming. It's long overdue, uh, we can't continue to exist within a boom bust situation where we only talk about, uh, the, the economy in a down, uh, cycle. I have a creed that I'd like to read, it's rather short, but I really believe it. "I believe that faith in God gives meaning and purpose to human life, that the brotherhood of man transcends the sovereignty of nations, that economic justice can best be won by free men and women through free enterprise, that government should be of laws rather than of men and women, that earth's great treasure lies in human personality, and that service to humanity is the best work of life. If you agree with what I believe, I would certainly appreciate having your vote next
I'm excited, I guess, for the fact that we're gonna have two new candidates here that are not an incumbent, uh, I mean, Brooke, Brooke was not elected, I mean, jeez, you know, so I, I don't consider her an incumbent, I think that you're gonna have two new faces here and two fresh new ideas, or sets of ideas. So I think it's great, I, I'm a, I'm a candidate for, for smaller, limited government, um, you know, I, I'd like to, I'd like to optimize our county facilities to their full potential, and I hope to have your vote.
These are unprecedented times, and the choices that we make matter, and the leaders we have right now really matter. And I will bring optimism, pragmatism, and hard work to the county commission, and I am, I'm grounded in a love of Wyoming and of my community, and I, um, I, I know that these are unprecedented times, but if we do the hard work now, we can really position Netroona County for a, a stronger future, a better future. And, uh, my name is Vickery Hales Hall, and I hope you vote with me for county commissioner, thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you all, coming. I hope that if you've got any additional questions, the candidates will take it and you can address them directly. Thank you much. Thank you.